Okay, we probably planning and zoning, we have mission regular meeting to order. First item is the roll code.
Yeah.
Steve.
Yeah.
You have a form. First item of this, before we start on business, request to change the order. Meeting, but put the new business items before the old business items, since we have one person participate. No business items, yeah.
Is that just for this evening or?
Just, no, no, this, that's just.
Yep, good.
Okay, next we have is approval of minutes of previous meetings, we've done minutes of April. Twenty fifth minutes. Recognizing mission. Second, smooth and second, but so and so now. Does anyone have any corrections?
Um, just one, Mr. Chairman. Did we always have on subsequent pages, the header, say, planning commission?
No, it was the same, planning and zoning commission, although this is a, this is progress, because it needs to just say committee of the whole.
Now I never even looked up there.
Or look at the data, just assume.
I just had one question, I don't even, I must have misheard, but on page four, it says a total of one hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards of materials.
Yes, it is, you did miss here. Because you kept saying a hundred and fifty, I don't even know why they're doing this.
Yeah, that's why.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wasn't. Okay, that's fine, I'm not, I don't have a problem with it, I just, when I read it, I thought, oh my, what was I thinking? Thank you.
Anybody have anything else? On page five, paragraph X three. Very last three words in that sentence, do they belong there?
This is the CBN.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It says, wetlands to cover the construction of the driveway. Access of site, line improvements twenty feet from title, wetlands, review the plan.
Period.
Yeah.
Yes.
Anyone have anything else? Lot of motion to approve the minutes of April twenty minute meeting as amended, all those in favor say aye. Eight dollars, there'll be extensions. Actually have public communications, does anyone want to mention? Communications report, staff. Does any, anyone in the public wish to address the commission tonight? On his own. Then the next item is site plan twenty three, all one chronic planes lighting. For no road. We have to look at when. Make their presentation.
Good evening, Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm here this evening to present proposal to put solar powered lighting along the walkway at Quonic Plains Park. And I think at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Chad Frost from Kent Frost to provide the details of this project.
All right, good evening, Chad Frost, Kent Frost, next park that you're happy to be in front of you. And I do appreciate you rearranging your schedule, so we can get through this and a couple other things quickly tonight. In front of you, so I'm trying to share this, there is a bit of a lag, but I'll try to be pointing on the screen, so people watching online can see it as well. But we are here before you, this is Quonic Plains Park. Get a look at this, right? Yeah, I think everybody knows where the site is. Obviously, right there, the former Rochester site right there. And Quonic Bridge neighborhood off to the side. This is the enlargement of just the, the walking track, if you will. The field house is right here, the main entrance coming in off of Fort Hill Road, Fort Hill Road is right along the bottom. We're here tonight looking to put in fifty four, yes. Fifty four solar LED lights around the walking path around Quonic Plains Park. This was something that came up, I believe the town councilor actually started the project a couple years ago during COVID. When everything was needed to be outside, or you can gain the importance of being able to be outside. And with especially darkness in the spring and fall, the ability to walk after work. It was seen that we wanted to add some months, and so Mark threw some grants and talked to a bunch of different people, came up with this plan. We have gone through wetlands, I'll note that down here. In this bottom area, as you're all probably aware, when you drive by from time to time, especially after rain, there is standing water out there. There is a flagged wetland, so we have gone through wetlands for that, there is one hole located within the wetlands and a couple within the review area. But really, the use of the projects or the use of the land stays the same, it's a preexisting recreational use, it remains a preexist, there are recreational use, we're done. We are expanding the hours of use by adding lights around the perimeter walking path. But as you can see, it is, there's no trenching required, it is a solar light, this is the, the. Solar panel on the top with the batteries integral into it, and all the LED comes right out the bottom. We've located them around the perimeter so that they're always located, or the slight tilt is tilted inwards to the property as opposed to outwards its property. Um, skip to the photometrics. These are not bright lights, I want to just be very clear about that. Right underneath the light, we get a maximum of two point six foot candles, and then it quickly drops off to, you know, half a foot handle is that ring. Down to a tentile foot candle in between the lights. And, and out at the perimeter, not even close to the property line, but the edge of the shrubs were at, at zero, right? So we do have a full cutoff to the property lines all the way around. This will create pools of light as you walk around the path, it won't be a well lit, bright and lit area. So you can see if anybody's out there walking with you, so for security sake, it's great, but it's not like you're playing with sports, which is another one we can talk about it as well. So this is very low level amount of light wrapping around, and the one thing that in our, our discussions with staff. And how this gets treated, we, we did bring up the fact of the twenty five foot buffer. And we do feel that there's an existing stone wall right along the property that's four feet high, and existing chain link fence that's six feet high. And mature red maples all the way down the perimeter, as well as a scrub growth that grows between the trees and the stone wall currently. That was the approved buffer back more than twenty years ago when Park Village was built. We think it's still suitable, the uses are all still the same, the separation from the residential neighborhood is still the same. And if anything, we see a lot of the neighbors along this property edge in particular, clearing their backyard out so they can see into the park. And so we don't think any more additional screening is necessary, or any more buffers necessary from the use that's already there. And I'll just highlight, we've added this to add a little bit more context, because obviously aerial shows you a little bit more of the context than just the survey. But you can see where the proposed lights are, you can see where the fence is underneath of it, the existing trees all the way down there. And the scrub growth, and then the stone wall in the back, all along that perimeter. To the east, the residential houses are a little bit further away, there is a little bit more standing woods, if you will, between the two, so you really don't see it at all on that side. And there are no existing buffer requirements in that side. We also have this photograph, this is from, from Google Map. Again, trying to describe what the existing buffer condition is today, so that you can see the red maples, this is obviously a fall photograph, you can see the trees along the back. You can see the existing mature trees behind that, so the scrub growth, and in very few places you actually see through that existing buffer back and forth. Although you can see right here. Where there was one tree that died, that has since been replaced, and the new one is back in this place, and the other place you can see through is right here to that house. Which is the end of the cul-de-sac, and so that's the road that comes in that serves the neighborhood to get to the park, and we can't put it. And with that, it's, I think it's a very simple project, it's good for the community to be able to let people get out and expand the hours when we can walk around. The Quonic Plains Park has a true minimal impact, so I'm happy to take questions.
Turn over to the staff.
All right, excellent. So, yeah, everything that Chad had talked about, there are wetlands on there, the, the Wetlands Agency had approved. The application back on, on April fourth, and, and really the disturbance of the wetlands are, will be minimal. The lighting will definitely not spill beyond the property lines at all, it'll help with pedestrian safety and extend the hours of the park. As Chad had mentioned, there is a twenty five foot buffer requirement, but, but with the existing conditions that Chad has discussed, we feel that it meets the intent of the zoning regulations. The one part that, that wasn't discussed is about the sidewalk and the sidewalk requirement. The frontage sidewalk is not existing currently between the entrance of the driveway to one eighty two Fort Hill Road. The existing walking path within the park that connects one eighty two Fort Hill Road has functioned as a frontage walk. Since the park was built and, and may be substituted for the required frontage sidewalk, so the applicant's asking it as a substitution. In addition, in the fiscal year twenty twenty four, Public Works Capital Campaign Budget. Money has been approved to design and build a frontage sidewalk along that section there. There was a few other things on the summary staff sheet, I'm happy to, to address those if you have any other questions. And I have a draft motion, I think you will share with everyone, but I have copies as well.
Moving up to the commission, any questions? Let's smile here. Generally speaking, perfect idea, just back when the, put them in place and, and there they go. And I notice. I thought we were good with this now.
So. The slant, that's just for the, I forget my types of lighting, if that's for the forward throw ones, the other ones are the flat one, flat top ones.
Yeah.
Okay. And so I, I kind of agree, is that with a slant like that, even though that little bump that I see on the underside, is that actually the emitter?
No, that's a photocell.
That's a photocell, okay, so it's all tucked up underneath there, so that would mean there's zero chance of any light invisible from the properties next door, so I think that's fine. I am aware how, how dim these things can be, especially over time as their batteries fail, so. One, a little bit of a technical thing, how long are the batteries going to last on this, and it's sort of programmed to then, that's where these tend to fail, is the batteries, not the lights.
Expectancy is ten.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, that's great, so my only comment therefore is on the layout, there's several places where there's trees on the south side. Of the fixtures. And they're not going to work there. Yeah.
Well, the height of this, that tree. I mean, we can move these around a little bit, obviously, so this was a lighting layout given by the manufacturer, we can slide these over slightly so that the tree lands in between the two.
That's, that's never coming.
Yeah.
Otherwise. It'll fail in no time. Otherwise. Oh, because, sorry. Yeah, so, yeah, it won't get, won't get that much light, all summer long, it won't get any light, during winter it won't get as much, so. And I, I recognize that in terms of the screening. There's assiduous trees on the north side, they're not really doing that much screaming for six months of the year, and I think that's fine, because these things are just a little foggy.
Yeah.
That looks like fog.
Well, the discussion we had was anything that we were, if we were to cut those mature trees down, in order to put back six or eight foot tall evergreen trees, it would be years before they ever got, you know, it doesn't seem to make sense. This definitely was the, the buffer as it was installed, this is still making total sense.
But these are, these are sticks with a pizza box on top, these are little things. I'm, I'm, that's it.
Mike? I, I think it seems great. Does this work, because we had a CIP for the parking lot improvements? And I just want to make sure that, that these things are coordinated for the.
Oh, this you.
Grid, yeah.
Yes.
This doesn't affect that in any way.
No.
And this is part of, this is going to light up part of the parking lot?
Yes, that's the point, okay, yeah. What people need is the lock, what I think is, you know, you don't want it to be intense black.
Yeah, no doubt, and there's nothing there now.
No, that's correct.
Can you tell me just a little bit more about the sidewalk that's, when we will see that, and, or are we gonna see it coming twenty twenty four?
It's in the twenty twenty four budget, now this is the state road, so we're gonna have to go through the DOT, so that would.
And it's just from the entrance.
Well, my understanding is going to go. Right now, there's. Yeah, there's a sidewalk that goes right here. And this sidewalk that goes up here, so I understand that it's going to, to be here all the way down to.
And it's, do you know what, the width of that, it's gonna be five?
I don't answer it, it's.
Yeah, so we will, there, there is, I mean, the one on the other side of the driveway is five feet wide. However, there is new zoning here that may require something wider, but at, at minimum, it is going to be five.
Yeah, that's, thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
I don't have any comments, I think it's a great idea.
One comment, I noticed on the plans that there was time of operation, and it shuts off at nine thirty, am I, is that correct?
Yeah.
How does that happen with a photocell?
It's, it's programmable.
Oh, whatever.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because we don't, we don't want the lights running on right.
Yeah.
To encourage, you know, we want to withstand operation, but not make it.
Yeah, so you can walk at two AM or something. And do, do you know the color temperature of the lights?
I don't think we have it on.
I didn't, I didn't catch it right up.
No. We can look it up and get back to you, though, or, or if there's a preference, we normally go between twenty seven hundred and.
So it's that soft glow as opposed to the harsh blue.
And not unbreakable.
Okay. Yes, that, having seen both, I prefer the twenty seven to three K.
We'll, we'll make sure we're somewhere in that.
Yeah.
Just a couple of quick things, was there market demand that people had asked that the hours be extended in the park?
Yes, so part of the. Traditional deeds survey that was stemming is people wanted to see more access, proximity, provide better access, like extending. Extending the available time that people could jump and use.
Yeah.
Well, for someone who goes to bed at nine o'clock, nine thirty, to me, it seems pretty good, but did the Groton town police look at it as far as a risk or anything? Have they been consulted?
As far as the idea of.
Additional hours, nighttime hours.
Oh, no, we didn't, okay.
Yeah. And the last thing was, you had mentioned a grant, is that grant specific to these, this solar project? And was it? Got it, yes, okay, thank you. So.
Anything else?
Yes, I have a question, it doesn't seem, except for the seating area, doesn't seem to be much of the playground.
It shouldn't be out there later.
But they will do.
The lighting needs for a playground have to be significant.
Oh, it's a must, so either he has nothing or, okay, got that. And for the color, I don't think you're going to find twenty five, twenty seven hundred. That's a residential thing, but up to four thousand, I think it's what we've been targeting. What are the streetlights that we've got, that we put up here, I think they're thirty five or four. I think they're thirty two, which is a great color, you're not going to get twenty seven, it's okay.
Anything else? Somebody have any concerns with the motion? Stay African, divided a copy of them.
Yes, yes.
If you have any concerns. So. As I have no, no questions, or even ask. So I'll make a motion to approve site plan twenty three dash oh one. For the installation of solar architectural lights at one hundred and fifty. Fort Hill Road with the following modifications, one, any modification to this. Plan imposed by another federal, state, or local agency shall require additional review by. Town staff or the commission, whichever is appropriate. Two, technical items raised by staff shall be addressed. Findings, the commission finds that the existing fence, stone wall, mature maple trees and landscape. Plannings on the north side of the site meet the antenna section eight point one dash six point eight of the zoning regulations. And fall under design standard eight point one point six point C point two. Commission finds that a frontage sidewalk between the driveway entrance and one hundred and eighty two Fort Hill Road does not exist. The existing walking path within the park that connects to one hundred and eighty two Fort Hill Road. Has functioned as a frontage walk since the park was built and may be substituted for required frontage sidewalk. Is there a second?
Second.
Smooth and second, Steve. Does anyone have any concerns, questions in the motion, vote on them. Motion for site plan twenty three dash oh one, all those in favor, Scotty. They have votes, they have extensions, motion is very unanimous.
Very well done.
All right, illuminating presentation.
I'm just saying, it was good. And a good joke, Jeff.
Twenty seven hundred.
Oh, you're gonna sound relaxed. Yeah, once you keep.
So moving on to. Move on to new business, we have no more application, we have any?
None, none that are received tonight.
Okay, so referrals. First referral is Stonington referral, Mr. River, boat house, oak house park. And I see this as a planning commission. In this. I think you do that on purpose. Yes, if the applicant would receive.
Good afternoon, or good evening again, Chad Frost. Happy to be in front of you for Bohas Park as well, hopefully you've seen this in the papers a little bit, and heard it being talked about. Just as far as orientation, this is Route twenty seven, Greenmanville Avenue, this white. Edge of the top is the Rossi Mill Building on the edge of the Seaport. And over here, this little bit of land you can see is where Latitude Forty One Restaurant used to be, which is now the mall, waiting for the new Delmar Hotel to go up. Right there, so there is a small spittle land right here, which Stonington bought about seven years ago. With the idea of converting it into a public park and coastal public access. We are now finally at the point of submitting for those local permits, and because we were within the proximity. Technically, they said we didn't have to come see you, because the center of the river is far enough away, but we said it's probably the right thing to at least let you know what's going on, and happy to take any comments. So I'm here to talk to you about it, I, I don't want to take a ton of your time, I can spend hours talking about this project, because we've spent way too much time on it. There's a lot of really fun things that we think we're doing, this is a brownfield, so this entire site was created by coal slag. It never was land here previously, that there's a tunnel that still exists today that goes right about here underneath Route twenty seven. And back when they were first building the mill in eighteen ninety eight, and utilizing it, they would bring coal up the river. Dump it on the beach, and they had a little, the tunnel, little electric cart that ran under the tunnel. Burn the coal when they're done burning it, they brought it back and dumped it in the river again. And so all of that proceedings of coal slag from the mill is what formed this entire land for. It's something we have to deal with, obviously, the brownfield site, so we are capping it, we have a, a full L G team working on it, it's not as terrible as it sounds. And so a two foot clean fill cap on top of it will provide it for safe public use. There are a few really minor little things that we're going to take out, and I mean like fifty gallon ground size amounts of soil, but otherwise everything is tested clean, and it's been tested for about. Twenty years as they were going through different sales of the property. Because of that, so we're lifting the site by about two feet, there was an existing house, which is currently going to be here, right now, it's, it's here, we have to pick it up and move it. So that, that house was deemed historic because it was part of the Rossi Mill Historic District. And so in discussions with SHIPO, they wanted to have, we needed to elevate it to get it on blood plane, and once we elevated it, they actually wanted it moved to the north. To be the first thing that residents would see or, or visitors, as you're coming down Route twenty seven in the mystic, you'd see the historic house as opposed to the boat house structure, as your first thing. We do have to, I'll zoom in a little bit here. Part of the, the standards for historic restoration is that new and old should be separate, and you'll see that in some of the renderings, but we've created this glass connector piece. Between the, the old and what will be the new, so that they truly stand apart, and we're not trying to mimic one for the other. There has been a lot of attempts with this building, so this is the boathouse specifically, this will house the Stonington crew team as well as the community rowing center, so it will be open to all residents of South Eastern Connecticut. To be able to go and row out of there, both young and old alike, and do both group rowing and individual rowing. But row, you know, these shells are sixty feet long, so they take up quite a bit of space, and you need to have racks to hold them, so it is a, a pretty good sized building. It was intentionally turned in this location, and we played with amassing of the building so that from the Route twenty seven, there's some hip roofs to make it look more like a garage, that would have been kind of associated with a house. Back in the day, right, so there was some of those architectural tricks being played to make it look more appropriate, since it is. The new building is significantly larger from a massive perspective than the existing house. So we pick up the house, we move it, we add the boathouse and the connector piece, and then the, we've worked with the public in Stonington and North Committees in the last seven years to develop, what is the program on that park? For the most part, they want an open passive recreation that serves both the crew team as well as the public, and so there's, this is the dock for the crew teams. And then we have a public car top launch boat ramp, so this is like kayaks, canoes, non-motorized, you can't back down a car down the ramp with a boat trailer. But it is a, a ramp that you can walk down with your boat, so the public can pull into the parking lot, we have a drop off zone along the curb, and you can unload and bring your boat down, and this is a public ramp down to a float dock. That will also be able to be used as a dinghy dock for the mooring, or the anchorage, I said, out in the river harbor itself. Speaking of the parking lot, so we very intently did not want to just pave the entire site with parking, this is going to be what we hope to be a fairly popular park. We couldn't pave the entire thing with paving so that you had enough parking spaces, but then there's no reason for people to come to the park. So we did form a partnership with the Seaport. Half of the parking spaces that we need by, by standards for the size of the boathouse are housed on site, and the other half are housed behind Rossi Mill, so we have a walkway pathway to get up there, and a sharing to give that parking. And then I'll also note, we, we have the shared driveway to the hotel, and some shared parking that will be shared between the, the park itself and the hotel as well for that small parking area. I'll note, from a stormwater management perspective, we are collecting all of the stormwater from all impervious surfaces, both the buildings and walking surfaces and the driveway. And putting it into an infiltration system that is underneath the parking area, we're using the center strip in between, what would normally be a landscaped island sometimes. It's actually permeable pavement, and so that's one of our, we're using it like a giant trench drain, so the water flowing across the, the parking lot can infiltrate in, and go down and infiltrate right into the chambers below that. And one of the things that I think is the most exciting part about this project is our shoreline, and so we do have to bring in that fill and lift the site up, and so what do we do to contain that fill and keep it from corroding? We, we looked at a bunch of different options, and what we've designed here is what's called a living shoreline. So this is, instead of doing a bulkhead, instead of doing sheet tiles or a rock revetment, a very hard structure, what we've come to find is those hard structures, like the bulkhead here along the Seaport. Are bad environmentally long term, right, it cuts off the connection from animals and plant life, you know, from that shore and that marsh and the transition back and forth. It also is bad from a flood perspective because you have a permanent barrier that can't go in. And from the wave energy, all that energy comes in, gets reflected and goes somewhere else. So you might be doing something beneficial for your own property, but you're probably hurting. Nature-based design for this living shoreline is we look at what's physically working on the site. And then figure out how we can mimic that and kind of plant the seeds, if you will, to allow nature to fortify itself. So that it acts like a. A hard structure, but it's still a soft area and it encourages the marsh to grow. And what we have actually to be able to look at on this site is, this is an existing stone wall that's around the, the, kind of the end of the museum, we call it. It's very. Forest at this point, right? So there's just kind of rocks stacked up there and the water flows back and forth through it very evenly or very easily. What we find is that these elevations where we're at below. Two point five and lower. And though the tide can come in and inundate, we have some beautiful stands of Spartina in it. Fully, I'll say saturated with mussels as well as sea lavender in these areas. Native stands growing out of complete garbage soil, right? I mean, it's, it's coal slime and we've got these great strands of, of native marches growing right here. But at the same elevation, which is right here. And this is a graphic illustration, so. But we have nothing grown. So elevationally, we should have those same plants growing. But this little bit of protection from that stone wall that allows the water to flush back and forth, that protection, that break of wave energy. Allows for the marsh to exist behind it, but where we don't have that wave energy dissipator, no marsh can exist. So the plan for the living shoreline. Is to create a sill. That's a permeable sill, which is made out of some rock. That's piled up so that it's below the high tide level of the tide as it's coming through, water will flush through. But it won't come through with a lot of energy. And so that will allow then the marsh to infill behind it. In the backside of that sill, we're actually planting it with soil, we're planting it with Spartina. And then we're doing what's called the muscle socks, where you take these. Little long sock, basically. You put it out there and it seeds naturally with the mussels that are already growing. And Spartina and mussels really have to grow symbiotically together. They basically like weave together and you form a very solid mat. And where it is growing out here, it's about a foot thick. Right? And then right next to it where it has no protection, there's no mussels, there's no Spartina, the elevations are rooted in the left. So by creating these sills and seeding it behind it with the Spartina and the mussels. We're going to allow that to grow back and then the mussels on this side that currently exists at the very top edge to grow forward. This line that you can see around the edge, that's actually logs, so we place natural logs. And we anchor them to the shore right at elevation two point seven. So what we see again, looking in this area of context. Where we have that little bit of protection from the stone already. The one area that we get some scour happening is right at that two point seven, two point five and two point seven elevation. And that's the ice that comes above the rocks in the winter can come in and scour that line at that elevation. So we're putting logs all the way along that elevation, a natural thing that we want to break down, we want it to be composed over time. But it'll provide enough protection to allow the marsh to grow both behind it and in front of it. So the living shoreline, very exciting. We're kind of doing two different tactics. This side, we're calling it's a marsh. We're planting and plugging to get it to grow on its own. On this side. This little beach is actually what we call glass beach. There's so much glass dumped here that there's no rocks, there's no sand. It's just thick with glass. And so in that case, we're doing what's called a marsh creation, where we actually go and replace the soil for the plants to be able to grow in. From day one, so we're putting fill over there to create the marsh. Whereas on this side, we're not putting any soil and we're just plugging in the native soils and allowing it to grow on its own. So that's the rendered plan. I, I have a copy of the entire. Set of plans, all, I don't know how many sheets at this point. I wasn't gonna go through unless you have very specific questions on the technical stuff, but I did figure you probably want to see what the buildings look like, right? And so this is the, the three D renderings of the building and the site. This is just the materials. Both that we called out for architectural review on the Stonington side. This is a historic house that has to meet the standards for restoration, so we're basically putting back. What's already on there. This is the glass connector between the two and then this is the barn base. And again, I would just point out. The, the way that we've hit the roofs and turned things to make it a one-story building on the roadside, again, to diminish that the massing of building. And then. This is a view, this is basically the view from ground, okay? So this is the river looking back towards, so you see the boathouse entrance where the boat bays are. There is a second floor to the boathouse, which is where they hold all the herbs or diameters that they practice on. And training room up there, the glass connector and then the back of the house. This is the view if you're standing on Route twenty-seven, looking kind of towards Groton, so that's that hillside is the hillside on Groton. And then two more views, again, this is now on Route twenty-seven, looking back towards Groton and back in the park. The side that does face Groton. Also point out, from a other thing you might care about, lighting perspective. We were very sensitive to, to lights. We have street scape lights that happen. Those are the little dots right there. It's the same light that we've used in the rest of the Seaport property. So it is a full cutoff LED fixture with all the light angled down. And then within the park, we did have discussions with the police commission in Stonington. They want just a low level of light within the park. The park is closed at night, but they want to be able to see as they're driving by if somebody is walking around or out there doing something. So we have bothered lights, these are stainless steel bothered lights. They have a very small, about a one-inch slit towards the top of them, and again, all the light is angled down. And that's basically my quick. Summary is what I think is a very fun project. The state, we're, we're still going through local permitting, we then have to go through. State and federal permitting to the living shoreline stuff. The state from everything referred, depending on which division of the D O T, or, sorry, the thing you're talking to me. Is very excited for, because this is kind of the cutting edge of coastal engineering. There's only been one or two other down in Connecticut, so they're excited to have a good representative. So any questions? Or any pages, I can go back a little bit.
We'll go to commission. Or any questions?
Sure, when you talked about that public dock, you tied it to the anchorage in the river. Now, as you may know, that anchorage is rarely regulated, even though there is a regulation with it. So can the rest of the public also go to that public dock?
Yes.
And why do you have that type of language when you present like in that fashion?
I presented in that fashion because we've had, I was actually at the harbor commission this week.
Yeah.
And we were talking about the anchorage and, and when we started this project several years ago, they came to the committee and said, we want to make sure there's a public place. The public can tie up and, and enhance the use of that anchorage, because currently they don't have many places to get from land to the anchorage or back.
Okay. And did they mention the regulations they set for that they're supposed to regulate? Because people stay there for weeks, right?
Correct, there, there should be better enforcement for sure.
Yeah.
Of that anchorage.
That's great.
Yes.
And then you mentioned the Stonington Historic Site. Now, there's no historical commission in Stonington. What, what, what is that tied to?
It is tied directly to the state, because they don't have an installed commission locally.
Right.
Any, if, if challenges come up or issues come up, they get bumped right up to the, to the shipper office. And so ironically with this one, when the town bought the property, they literally bought it. The description during the town meeting was for complete demolition of the building. And their first response when we got back from U C B, which was the funding source for the first plan. Said, you're fine, demolish the building. And they said shipper, and shipper was a portion of the U C B. And it wasn't until we had a, we had a big meeting right out here at the end of the peninsula, we brought in every person from every agency that they were gonna have to talk to. And we're in the middle of that meeting when the shipper individual showed up and said, hold everything. You know, you being this solar historic structure and that was about a year-long negotiation to move them to keep that.
Good work on that. I'm just saying, that's all.
See, by your renderings, it looks like the, is it, is it barn board or?
Yes.
What, what's the answer?
Yeah.
And it's wood, it's painted?
Yep.
Anything, I was just curious about your. You know, selection of that. The rest of the Seaport doesn't look like that.
Yep, so I, what I, my easy answer is I'm the landscape architect, not the architect. But what I will say is they wanted. I don't know if you remember, this would have been probably three or four, it was pre-COVID. They hired a different architect to design the boathouse and they came up with an extremely modern building. And a lot of people said it looked like shoebox and they rumbled up. It did not rule over the public. But it was what initially people thought they wanted. Everybody had said, we want this big gateway building, this identifiable thing. And then they showed the public what that meant and everybody's agreed with it. And so really what we heard from that process was we want a more. Contextual building, it's a barn troops type thing, that's posed in being that, you know, doesn't. Shake too many people's ideas of what's aesthetic of things. So that's what they did. It's not part of the Seaport, this is town property, so.
Yes, yes.
Not meant to necessarily do anything with them. There was, there is vertical wood siding underneath Delmar Hotel, it's gonna be going in right next to this. A different tone, that'll be a grayer tone than this tone, but it would be contextual.
Okay. That's it.
Well, yeah, just a couple of things. I was curious about. Sorry, how did you figure out the parking for this? Because it, it seems like an asset that a lot of people would want and need.
Yeah, well, we hope it is. And you can see a lot of times when it comes to parking is this, if you build it, they will come, right? And so the size of the lot, a lot of times it equals how much you can get. Here, the current crew team already rows out of the Seaport. They park, all the crew members come from high school and they park in the Seaport lots. Currently and they roll out of the dock. So the idea was that, that amount of traffic and volume is already happening, they're used to parking on that property. And so then we can really kind of focus on public. Ironically, when you look at national parking standard for a park of this size, you need three parking spaces. Right? Which we know that, that's not even. And so then we looked at the building and applied it to kind of national parking standards and that's where we came up, I think it was in the forty-four, forty-two, somewhere in that calculation range. And we could split that between two places. But we do have bike racks. We hope people will come and go by bike, the elements of transportation. Yeah, I should also note, Pugan Farm, which is just. Down the way. They have the Greenmanville Trail, which goes through Pugan Farm and comes out to Route twenty-seven. It will then continue down the sidewalk and this path that comes around and goes into the Seaport is a continuation of that trail. Talking about the, the historical connection between what was at the time, the ship building. And it wasn't the Seaport, right? They were truly building ships there. And then the shipyard at Pugan Farm is growing all the food for the ship workers. And so there, there was a direct connection historically, and so we're making that trail, make that connection. And right now you'll be able, then you'll be able to take from basically like McQuaid's or even the nature center and walk the trails. From there through Pugan Farm down the road to the Seaport.
And there will be more parking, people will have to necessarily go under the tunnel or whatever. They can go in there like everybody else does.
We want them, yeah, the, the general public can definitely go and park in the signed area within the, the Seaport lot.
Just one other question. How do I bring this up? Cause I was going down by Oyster Club and there were so many people trying to get in the Mystic and see the parking lot. The whole street was backed out, so long, it was unbelievable. And you don't have a light here or anything and I don't know if you, you don't have any turn lanes, right? There, there's some kind of small slice. There, I'm not sure what that is.
There, this is the beginning of the turn lane, the intersection for the north entry of the Seaport is half a block. South of here. So that's the beginning of that turn lane that you can just see in the plan. So there is a lighted intersection there. If, there's only two crosswalks there, not one on each side, we're working with D O T to get one on that side. The other thing I would just put out there from a parking perspective, because we do a lot of work with the Seaport. Is in the current master plan that you just got adopted a few months ago. Their south lot, we've been into a paid parking for the public. And advertise and they run a shuttle from there down to Set Paper and back again. And they also just purchased the, the boat shuttle that used to do tours, now they'll be doing. Moving people back and forth so that you can park at the Seaport. Get your admission if you want, or you can also just hop on a boat and go down there. So they're trying to do their part to alleviate some of that. So not related to this project, but.
So you don't see it back, you know? Or anything?
Here, these driveways?
Yeah.
Hopefully not, we are currently, I should point out, I, I guess I'll, you know, we're currently literally in the discussions with Ostan right now. The, because this is a state highway, because the Seaport has enough traffic. Everything we do in there gets bumped up the minutes. And so they are, this is about a third of the nation in that driveway right now.
Right, thanks.
But a good point on the Mystic Fire Association, it remains no algorithm for that. I'm just saying.
They have a session. No, I mean, there's some. And every time I have one, I think the parking lot backs up.
Sure.
Oh, well, that's true, there's still a guy out there, hopefully.
Oh, was it?
Oh, yeah.
Right, oh, I think it looks great. The only hours operation, it's gonna.
Good question, so the park is closed at sunset, part itself, the building will have later hours going till nine or ten o'clock at night.
And is there lighting in that dock area?
Is there lighting like down in here?
Yeah.
No.
No, none at all.
So there's, there's a bothered light right there at the top. But no lighting on the dock itself.
Yeah, I, the, the living shoreline is. I, I, there was one, this kind of work was done on a property where I live on Trooper Point Road, just very small and they brought. Marsh in from Barn Island.
Okay.
And put rocks in and, and I tell you what, it's working fabulously. They didn't put the socks of mussels in.
Yeah. Yeah, the muscle socks are, we really wanted to do oyster casting, which is another whole really cool technology. They just, we don't think they're going to work in this ice condition, they're gonna scalp everything.
Are those socks eventually removed?
The socks, so what's interesting is you, you get to seed in the sock. You put the sock down and eventually the mussels literally like just grow right out of it. So you don't have to do anything, it breaks down over time and they basically, as they start from seed and they grow the full muscles, they just literally like.
Is there any issue if people collect them?
We're, so I should point out, because there is a contamination on here and of course, that's why we did coastal public access in designated areas. Through a controlled structure, either that's the ramp or the dock. We did not make any way for the public to easily get down to the shore.
That's all.
And we'll probably have some signage for, it's a no muscle and no shellfish zone anyways, but they probably put some more.
Okay, that, that's all, thank you. Looks great.
Well, I thought something, at least from the view from, especially from the view from the rotten side of those. Yeah, it's a little weird having the board in back because we don't have a lot of that, but it's a barn. It looks like a barn, looks like a boathouse barn because it's got the balcony, so I, I understand everything about it. The walkout, so the walk around. Does that have the little bollards all the way around the, that walk?
This is the bollards along it.
Okay.
Sit here, yeah.
They'll, they'll always be on, because I'm, I'm thinking those are gonna be popular ones, especially when the hotel blows up. People going to the ice cream place, that's the way they're gonna walk back to the hotel, so that's gonna be a popular walkway.
I would hope so.
Okay. I'll throw this comment, even though it has nothing to do with Rotten's use of it. Two things about bathrooms, so there's an exterior, but one exterior bathroom in a corner there.
Yep.
And that's supposed to be it for the public?
Yep.
That's, that's a little, a little iffy, but okay.
Well, you look at your public access on the other side.
Well, we have, we have a, a, a public bathroom over there. What the heck is going on with the bathroom internally? Then it's the strangest, I've, I've never seen that ever.
Yeah, well.
It's open to the lounge, including a view right into it.
So these are all, well, this is a, a unisex changing area.
Changing.
So each, each of these are individual walls with a ceiling and a full door.
Okay.
Individual bathrooms.
Couldn't zoom in far enough to see that.
Yeah, so that's, that's because again, they'll get an influence of, of students from coming by bus, right? And they need it, they're just getting out of school, they need to change, get into the rowing gear. Instead of trying to have a full men's locker room and a full women's locker room, we don't have room to be able to pull that all up. And some kids kind of already do that somewhere else, so that, that what they came up with was basically instead of having little stalls. You have rooms that are private so that you can go in, change, go to the bathroom and, and go on your way.
Okay, that's why I did the maths, they're, they're almost four foot wide in here, I guess that's, that instead of a three foot wide stall, that's, that's how you came in.
Yeah, and no sink, right, the sinks are all out here, so that's.
Right, okay, so that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah. But it is different than what you'd see in a normal public site.
But, but not unusual in Europe, but a little odd growth.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I think that's great. No comment? Except for the bathroom. It's a good. Very interesting, but thank you.
Pretty imagined, I think.
We want to talk about the latter one.
Small, small area. Yes, and then move on to the next item, which is. CBA application number twenty-three oh four. G M S. G M S B O lights on the thirty-five rotten.
Perfect, thank you, so yes, we will be in front of Z B A tomorrow night. Uh, I think everybody knows where the new, the middle school is, obviously right there along Fort Hill. Uh, the site where the fields are, as you're all probably very aware, is along that western edge along St. Mary's, and kind of at the intersection. Uh, with the road. Um, you've all probably seen the fields, you, you were looking down, we were getting permanent and built. Uh, they're extremely successful, extremely well used, to the point to where they need a lot more time to be able to use them. Um, what I would point out right now is this multi-use field, that's the turf field. It is the only rectangle available for practice and for games. For all middle schools, boys and girls sports, and all high school boys and girls sports, except for the football. The football team can use the one field at the high school, all other teams for practices and games have to use this one field. Um, so it's extremely busy. There is a practice field here, which is smaller, uh, than the, the full-size field, it can use for practice, but it can't be used for games. And then there is a softball field off on the edge, also the only softball field, and girls softball field available to the middle school and the high school. Anywhere within this, and we have this in. Um, and so the use on it is extremely high, because we have, uh, a J V University girls team by school, and then a middle school team. And they all need to practice about the same time and have games and all that, so it requires a lot of bussing and transportation. So the, the heart of this project is to install athletic field lights on, on all three fields. Um, as you know, lighting athletic fields requires a pretty good sized light to be able to shine the light down onto the field effectively. Uh, in this zone, because it's still a residential zone, the height limit on the light pole is twenty feet. And we cannot possibly light, uh, athletic fields from twenty feet up, or the light would just be going straight out. Uh, so the, the application in front of Z B A is to go to a seventy-foot hole for the poles around the multi-use field. Sixty-foot hole for the practice field, and the softball, we have a sixty-foot hole by home plate and seventy-foot holes. Uh, on the outfield, and I should just note, we'll obviously be back, back in front of you if we're successful tomorrow night, because Z B A for the height barriers. Maybe back in front of you for our site plan for the same project. Um, but that's where the, the light poles are going to go, with a service coming in off the road to, uh. Distribute the light, then underground everywhere else within the site. Um, there are standards that we have to meet for lighting athletic fields, um, and so as I mentioned with aquatic planes, it's very, very dim. The opposite is true of the fields, right, so we have, in the center of the field, we have to hit twenty-five foot cans. Uh, on the perimeter, you're up closer to thirty foot. That's on the main turf field. In the practice fields, uh, similar amounts of lights, twenty-seven to thirty on the perimeter. And then on the softball, we have to be higher at the infield, where there's more action in the smaller ball, and then lower on the outfield, so we're in the fifties. On the infield, and then the thirties up to the twenties on the softball feeling. Um, additionally, and I don't know why they broke out the photometrics like this, but on those poles, because we know if you're gonna have an event. At the softball field out here, the public needs to be able to get to and from the softball field. And so on, on the light poles along the path, there's an intermediary light, so that you can turn it on just by itself. Say there's a softball game and, and the other two fields aren't in use, you can have just basically a pathway, if you will, turned on on the poles. So that there's a safe route of travel, uh, back to both parking lots. From, from softball or from the multi-use field going the other direction.
Yeah.
Um. So, that's, that's the next one I want to show you. Photometrically, uh, for the most part, we are at the edge of the perimeter down to zero. So the, the full cutoff of these lights is impressive, if you can be at twenty or thirty foot candles at the edge of the field, and you know. By the property line, you're down to zero or, or one is an extreme cutoff. Uh, part of that, the reason we can get that cutoff, again, is the height, the higher we are, the more down we can angle it, and the more we can control that light. So that's the, the need for the request. Um, I will note, the only place that by the plan shows a higher, uh, light limit at the edge of the property is right here, where we're at three. Along the practice field, there is currently there, uh, about a twenty-five foot tall evergreen screen. Uh, that's been existing for a number of years, you can see it in the aerial photograph, actually running this whole length. And then in front of it, as part of the application, or an approval for the schools, is a double row newer evergreens that are about six to eight foot high range. That are starting to grow up, um, so even though there is some here, that those trees are not accounted for in that book candle. Uh, measurement, as we go around the edge, again, this is now. The property, if you will, but it's all owned by, by the town, and we're down to that zero to one or two, not taking into account the topography. Um. This is the, the details of what those poles look like, uh, again, probably something you've seen often. The heads are unique, the heads are different than what you probably used to see in those athletic fields. Everything is being significantly down, and I've got a good illustration of that, so Musco Lighting, which is the, basically the world's leader in athletic field lighting. Is, is who's been selected for this. This is their illustration of kind of light technology, right, so this is the same amount of light. Getting to the, the plain surface to get that right amount, and you can see how much glare you have. Based on, from the optics of how you can aim the lights, and the technology of going from old incandescent type lights in, in the seventies. As we get better, the lights can aim down more, starting in the late eighties. And early nineties, we started putting the hoods on the top of the lights, because we were worried about dark sky stuff, and so it basically was still the same light fixture, but with a, a shield on the top. The shield got a little bit better through two thousand five, and now today, with those L E D lights. You can truly put everything up in the housing when they light and bring everything down. So that, you know, this, this photo is taken from a hundred feet away from the light source, you don't have any glare in your eyes, um, from the light source itself. And all of the light goes down on the plain surface. Additionally, this is another representation of a, an existing park, so you can see just the, the idea of where those lights are, right? Not glare specifically, but you can see the housing. And what we're really showing here is how quickly that light cutoff happens, right, there's a bleachers back here that you don't even see. Because the lights are on bleacher, the light cutoff really happens very dramatically, uh, just outside the light poles. And in the foreground here, you can see that, you can see the track, but even up into the stands, how dark it is without any additional lights on. Uh, this is a, a view of tennis courts, again, showing just how drastic you can get, you know, that full twenty-five, uh, hook candle lighting. In the middle, which, and you need quite a bit of, of, of light to be able to see the tennis ball, going back and forth, but how quickly the light can drop off on the perimeter. The, the very simple graphic as to why height's important, right? At a, a forty-foot hole height, which is where we kind of did lighting, you know, forty years ago. You have to basically aim the light straight out, you get a, a long cast of light, you have to put a lot more power on it to get as far side of the field, and then people, residents. Cars going by have them, you know, they're having that light shine on them, and you're seeing the light source. The higher we go, the more direct we can aim the light down, and the less light trespass you have, uh, going off. When you look at the photometrics of that, this is again, that same tennis court, and you can show old technology, how far the light spreading glare would go. New technology, how much more you can focus it right on the surface. And then this is the image of what those fixtures actually look like. Uh, so again, fully shielded fixture, the LEDs are tucked up inside with all the aiming technology in, and, and focusing down. So that you have very little chance of seeing the light glare, uh, in your face. And so, uh, that's my really quick one, as to why we're gonna be, why the school board is asking for a variance for height, to be able to install those.
The staff of the, the report.
Uh, no, not, not really.
This is just a referral at this point.
It is, that is exactly right, it is a referral, um, if, as Chad mentioned, um, if he is successful, you will see a site plan application with probably. Same presentation, same things, yeah. Right.
Well, our data.
Exactly, exactly, but as far as the variance goes.
Variance, it's just.
That's correct.
And what's the variance now? I mean, they can go for variance to twenty feet, forty feet.
No, it's twenty.
It is twenty feet.
Twenty feet total, right?
Yes.
And if you think about the, uh, the foul ball pools, and there are already that high enough, and softballs down in the hole, it's about fifteen feet low. Um, but the, the existing light poles at Fitch are not quite there, you think they're about sixteen feet, really. The new poles at Rosso, so that brand new. Um, does there, that's somebody's. So directly adjacent, um, same height. Similar technology.
Yes, you know, I wanna open it up to, to questions.
I didn't know if you were just gonna.
No, because there are two, two paragraphs, like. Really involves here, the one that they quote, and then the one before that is writing for sports, sporting events, I don't know. But can, would the, kind of explain why. An exception was requested. Rather than changing, you know, so on, request to change this on regulation.
Uh, that was kind of the direction that we were given, was, was the town wanted to, to, you know, the town, the school board wanted to be able to put the lights up. And, and you were basically saying, in order to do that, a variance was needed, but you could, I guess, change.
There's a reason why I raise the question, because. On the application form, one of the first things it asks, what you need for the property.
Yeah.
As opposed to other properties, similar properties in the district, which is none.
Yeah.
So you can't say.
Well, what's different is the zone makes it impossible to light this.
No, it has nothing to do with the zone, it has to do with zoning regulation. Applies to every lot in the district. The height.
Yeah.
Right. And there's nothing that you need, it's proper. And any other piece of property.
And, and that is something that the zoning board of appeals, that is, that's their charge. Um, to determine whether or not there is a hardship here, so, so the regulation that, that he's asking to bury is. With regards to outdoor lighting, and there is a specific section for outdoor recreation, and it says twenty-foot high poles. Yep.
But I just wonder whether we should, the zoning regulation should be revised.
That would be great.
And that's just it, it's a long process, that's correct.
I mean, uh, just like, I don't think the school should be, you know, like, kind of wanted to rezone the entire school when you're going through that process, but that's not.
No, no, it wouldn't, it would be, it's a generic. It's a paragraph that applies.
Part of the framework. Yeah.
It, it's eight, five, three.
Yeah, it's just light ones, what it has before that outdoor recreation activity areas. That could either provide a seventy foot in there, or just say eight point five three B, no, it's not applicable to that segment.
Right, it would, it, right. Regulation amendment, but as of right now, they're asking for a variance, yeah.
So. Well, I would say, that's my turn. I would agree completely with that, that seventy foot would be, when we address it, it should also have. The angle that gets specified when you do that, that's the magic part, is when you go up seven feet, it changes that cutoff, I can't just do it. And, and you can't do a, a dark sky cutoff, which is just below horizontal, it's going to be a thirty degree or twenty-five degree cutoff. And now with L E D technology, you can actually make it an absolute cutoff, which we weren't able to do before. So that's, that, we, we were, we would want to specify that in there too, not just the height, that's what they used to do. We've seen highway lights that are like that, they're of a hundred feet, and there's glare bombs, new ones are pretty good. Some of them are wonderful, because that cutoff is same thing that Musco is trying to do here. As it turns out, I have a lot of, I worked on the lighting with Musco at the subbase.
Oh, alright.
The older technology with metal halides, but the hoods and the focuses and all that kind of thing, that their, my cuff was always pretty good, these are spectacular.
These are getting amazing.
These are absolutely spectacular, so any problem with light trespass or neighbors having a problem, it goes away if you can get them up high enough.
Yes.
And so I'm all in favor. Whatever Musco says they need. Like, um, what, what lights are, are on the football field now? Cause I, I live on Jupiter Point, and I can see those from my house.
Yeah, um, well, can you see the light, where do you see the?
The sky is, you know, looks like Foxwoods.
Um, I'm not entirely sure, but we can give you the answer, but.
No, I'm, I'm just curious, is this different than that?
Oh, yeah, definitely, that is an old metal halide, you know, big ballast. Probably a forty-year-old type, like, technology.
Alright, and what, what is on these fields, is there anything on them now?
Lit, lighting wise?
Yeah.
Nothing, which is part of the problem.
Yeah, I think, I mean, the problem for me is the, is this, this, it's on Fort Hill, right?
Yeah.
That's why we had, that's why. There was a fort there, it was, you know, it was a good place to.
Yeah.
So anyway, uh, that, that's it, and the hours of operation, when would these things turn on?
Um, I don't think we've specified that yet, because of the, it's just a Z B A, just looking for.
No, I kind of figured that, I just was, you know, I just, uh. It seems like we should probably be booking it. That was, you know. That's all, so. Just a curiosity, but some power.
Good question, I need to tell you that. Um, thirty kilowatts? Total load?
Or light?
For, that's for twenty-four liters.
Some juice.
It takes some juice, uh, but it is significantly less, I think it's like forty percent less than all of the light technologies, so significantly less than. Even what we're using in Fitch right now. From an energy perspective, and I know that the school is working on, outside of this, they're working on a deal with. Ever source and solar panels on these, so schools and things like that, to try to get.
I like, no questions. But what they, by the way, you notice it says fifty-seven hundred K for these lights.
For these lights.
These are really blue.
These are different.
I would, I would wonder about that.
These require, you know, you have to see a very small ball coming at you very quickly.
With the one salt that would be, I'm familiar with one set, uh. It's on the ball field now, fish, those Coopers?
I don't know, it's.
It's Musco and Cooper, and the cheap ones were Cooper, and so.
I think that's why you see the black.
Especially on a foggy night.
So, we're not doing.
On the variance.
On, on the variance. I, I'm concerned with that, because. It's not just the seventy feet we're varying, you can only use the seventy feet if. You have certain types of lighting.
Open up your comment.
Pictures.
That the cutoff would have to be prescribed.
They have to go together, not just, I don't, I'm concerned about just approving seventy feet. Without also having in there a certain amount, and you, we should send a notice. To C B A for that, or are concerned that really, because it's not a unique to this property. That the zoning, the request should be submitted as a request for zoning regulation to change.
Why, say, because of the timing, put in a request for zoning change, we're not gonna get to that.
Right, why, we did it before, how long did it take? We had that for. What was it, three, uh, water screen project?
So it, I mean, to, to start from scratch and get it done, you're looking at three to four months, you know, with the initial. Review with the language.
Do it simultaneously.
And they, they need to be in construction this summer, you know, you need to sign the contract.
So it makes sense to say to request doing it simultaneously, but in the meantime, as you say, you know, give it the, the height.
I think half the reason we talked about the variance over a zone change, zone change applies to everybody, even, you know, the entire town. A variant applies just to this one site, so anybody else that wants to put in athletic field lighting somewhere else would have to come back. You know, so you, I, I think you control it more through a variance process and through, uh, uh, rewrite of the reg.
No, that's, that's the. Regulations to say that you can use this, or you need a special permit.
Right.
To use it.
Right.
So you have more control, that'll, I mean, you'd have to have a site, might have changed.
Yes.
So I think Jeff's point has merit, right, that it should fit into our framework overall. But I think our guidance to the Z B A for this particular. Application, be, please handle this application, we need to move towards, um, part of the regulation, that's.
What what I'm also hearing is that you're suggesting to the ZVA that they condition this variance. Such that the specs that are being presented along with the application are act have to be.
Part of their approval.
Right. Right, or or you can't go with the cheaper guys, whatever. Yeah.
Sorry, I brought up the name, but that's expense.
It has to be the seventy feet have to be tied in.
Right.
Cut with specific criteria.
And and the CBA can condition a variance when they grant it, so.
We we.
Send, can we send that? Well.
Yeah.
Send that in because they need it tomorrow.
They do. They need it for tomorrow night.
So if we can get that. And I guess how do we handle the. Solving change. Does somebody put it in or we just put it in?
I'm I'm assuming it's going to be a planning and zoning commission. I don't see the board of that doing it.
No, I don't think it should be a board of that anyway, because it should apply to any. Be allowed on any playing field.
We will, but I will, I mean, I will tell you, it's going to, you know, we're going to research it. Okay, because we're going to want to know what the proper conditions are, make sure that Parks and Rec is comfortable with it. So I don't think you'll be seeing it, you know, I. It won't be done in four months from tonight. How's that?
No, but I I mean, just to get it.
Yes, absolutely.
That's what I.
Absolutely.
I don't care about the actual. And maybe it's by changing eight point five that. Three point C. This work.
Right, it's definitely one of those two sections right there.
No, but if you put it there, then it's obviously it's only done for sporting.
Correct.
Cause you still want the twenty foot one anywhere else.
In the residential zones. That's right.
Now we're clarifying. Without any.
Alright, okay. Thank you very much. I'll get out of here and get on the move.
Then we move on to the long items. And so moving back to all business, uh the Tarpun. Hours to my telecommunications.
So as as you all remember, this is the tower that's proposed in Noank. Um I received comments from Kevin, Steve and Sue, and those who are included in your packet. Um I synthesized some of the comments into a draft. Um recommendation to send on to the sighting council and to the. The owners or the the applicants for the tower. Um it is in draft form, so you know, feel free to modify.
So when I open up the commission for any comments.
So I understand, uh as I read the draft. Um the draft seems very specific to what our mission is in many ways. Um the type of comments that I presented um were an extension, I think, of. My thoughts, my beliefs and our research. And they they go far in excess of the draft that we appear to be submitting for the moment now. So my only point is, I understand that, right? If this is the draft. Um but is there a second conduit in order to submit the type of questions or um issues that I have? With it sitting on the planning commission outside of the commission? Or does it commission in any way? Are they opposed to me um providing those comments to any other bodies directly? To me, meaning can I go through um can I and provide public comment in any other way in the letter that I that I sent? You do, is there, you believe there's a conflict? Because I believe my letter is far more reaching than what we're going to provide as draft back.
Right, right. I I I agree. And some of it is outside the scope of this commission. I mean, as certainly as the member, a member of the public who can comment on any application. Um. I I don't know whether or not the commission would feel comfortable, you know, attaching it as. Um, you know, noting in this that, you know, several members also had other thoughts and and attaching it to. Um the comments that are sent to the siding council.
I guess you would refer or just put it as a referred document.
Uh yeah, I mean, we could just certainly note that there are more detailed comments from commissioners and those who are attached.
Yes. I don't, yeah.
Yeah, and I think you saw that also in there was um correspondence from the conservation commission and then. What was probably a form letter right back from the citing council saying that we don't have an application yet, but we will put it in the file. Um so we can, we can do the same thing.
Really, that's like.
Yeah.
Cause all we're providing is information.
Right. So so we can definitely add another another bullet on to that, just noting that there are more detailed comments attached from a certain planning commissioners. Sues and Steve's. Yes.
Maybe that's the best way.
If if you all are comfortable with that, that's fine. That's fine. Absolutely. Please do. I I'm noting that there are members of the public with their hand up, but we're past public communications, so we're we're not going to. Um call on you. Okay. Okay, but other than that, okay, that's great.
Maybe that's the best way and just sort of some try to summarize them.
That we did summarize them as far as your draft essentially.
Right, right.
And you made him really relate to what we do.
You're the planning commission for them, so, yeah.
Great solution.
The one, the last. One was proposed from the last. Maybe it leaves a little more detail, but it's concerned about safety should the tower fall on the tracks or. Or the overhead wire. I don't know if it's looking at the site. I don't know even if the. At a derailment, whether you would could hit the tower because there's a big embankment there. Maybe you should just say it's a safety. But a falling on. Or the impact on.
Yeah, I I I I'm thinking the derailment. That's anywhere there's a train, anywhere there's a track, there's an issue of derailment. So in this case.
No, it would be a derailment, but if.
The tell us I'm saying.
Don't know if it could, if they could force the car to block.
Derailments at hundred eighty miles an hour. But they can take on anything along the route.
That maybe.
You know, we we built a. Fire department next to it. Um it's not a concern. It's just. We'll have to definitely have to find.
Yeah.
But should the tower fall on the railroad tracks? Or just the wires of the railroad.
It's the wire, it's. Something around here.
Everything goes bad.
Plus, plus it affects some. On a major.
So, yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to dilute that by talking about the. Train leaving.
My only issue, like from a qualitative standpoint, the question is that. Is that we have no other eleven story structures on a close line within our town. And to me, it is somewhat of a planning. Or you see that as a zoning issue for knowing.
I think it's a zoning issue for knowing.
Okay.
Our plan.
Right.
So that. Now we could send those.
We'll send it on.
Alright.
Yep.
I'm surprised that there's no application.
I think this is the process. Yeah, yeah. The intent to apply so that people have time to actually review it and.
An actual submission.
Right, then like. Right.
Gotta be a contentious issue. I presume citing commissioners is a contentious issue, right?
Okay, then we can move on to zoning regulations and limits. Starting with data centers. And we have the. Comments. From.
From the town attorney, but that's that's correct. And that's what you have in your packet. Um, most of the editing was done for clarity. Um, just some reorganization of some of the words to make it read a bit better. Um, also removes um one of the requirements that depends on another agency's action. I I can go through them one by one if you like.
Who is JB?
Sorry, that's actually DJ. No, I know. It's 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 the way track changes does it unless you change your name. Um in in Microsoft, so it's that is me and I was just recording his his notes. No, no, it, these are his comments, um but uh from our discussion.
Are they always comments?
All of them, yes. Yes, yes, all of them.
Cause then you had town attorney edits with yellow at the top.
Yeah, it was just to make sure that everyone understood these are the town attorney edits. Right, no, no.
Are we speaking specifically to data centers right now?
Yes, yes, they just data centers.
This is just the data somewhere, right? Anyone has any comments?
Yeah.
More a question, but five. Dot one day six dot F status. On size. And then it said data, the comment was data centers contain computer servers. By definition, is that true? I just don't know the answer to that. Is that true?
So I think that is in our, in our, in our definition.
Always been our. It didn't come from the town. I mean, the state. That was developed.
No, that, yeah, that was the developed by Horace Lee Witten based on their, on their research. So I I think the comment just means you don't need to have those words in there because if you refer back to the definition in the zoning regs, it already says servers.
Right.
It's with servers.
The cabinet one. That's the one on.
I think we can, you know, at first I thought we needed it, but. I think that the two issues. It seems we have. Noise pretty well over time, but we didn't have any.
But it was right. He he definitely had concerns about it because it's. A cabinet that is inside of a building.
Right.
So very difficult to um to to actually expect, right? And and why seven feet? Um do you have scientific evidence that anything? I mean, that's what, that's sort of what his concerns were is that it's.
Came up with that.
Yeah.
Cause. It would be possible to stack two normal cabinets on top of each other on one floor. But I don't think we care as long as we meet the noise criteria.
That that that's exactly right. That's right. Yep.
What do we care? That was info.
Yeah, I do have one. Um, under our definition, we do have. It says network computers servers in one physical location or multiple contiguous locations. Yet doesn't our location exclude? Data centers that were are. Adjacent to one another.
Right, so this is defining a data center, not the standards that you are going to impose on them.
Right. I don't understand the distinction. It just says. Data center and it's just. The definition of this thing.
But not our data.
Yes, no, right, no. Okay, these are data centers, okay? So if you want to build it in Groton, you have to go by these standards, which say you cannot put them on continuous. You can't put them. Next to each other.
Okay. Alright, so this is a generic data center.
That's exactly right. That's right. You don't put the standards in the definition.
Yep, I understand.
Yep.
Got it.
That's all I'm gonna.
I don't want.
So basically, we're saying.
Okay.
What we have.
Okay.
Edited by the attorneys.
Okay, so that's what we, I'm going to uh submit that application tomorrow. I have an application for you to sign, Jeff, before the, before you leave. Um and at this point, we can schedule the hearing for the twenty seventh of June and we have enough time to make all of the referrals. Right, short term rentals. So this is the memo that Horace Lee Witten produced um after your last workshop. So all of the gray boxes in here are Jeff Davis's. Comments on the changes that he had made based on your discussion. So if you want, we can go through them.
Before we start, I think we have assumed still have understanding that. What we're guys allowing is is a short term round. There's one unit for a lot. And has to be. Owner occupied or. That's a primary resident.
Right.
Person that belongs to property.
That's right. That's right.
Cause that makes a big difference.
Was the consensus of.
Everybody understands, cause it makes a big difference in.
It does.
Okay.
I I'm going along with the commission. In the case where you've got a house and you start. Built another house on this lot. Or conjoined lots, which we'll probably see some of because. He rents out the other house because now that's okay. And then he leaves and goes to Florida and rents out his house. That's okay too. Now you have two short term.
That's what this.
So this would say you can't, you can't.
Can't do that.
No, no, you could.
I think you could, but.
No, it says. It, the definition, well, then maybe we'd have to say what the definition is. It doesn't say. I didn't think it said that it has to be present. It's just that it has to be in the market or is primary residence.
What I'm saying.
Somebody that goes down to Florida for three months in the winter. And still rent, I would think both, both units. No, I can only do one unit. You can only have one unit for a lot. So he could only rent one unit, but he doesn't have to be in his.
No, he doesn't have to, but he.
Right, he could leave it empty.
He's all, in fact, he must leave it empty.
Or he could rent it as a three month.
Can't do it a short term, so maybe that's, that's how that comes out. Yes, you can. Vent it out, but it must be more than thirty.
Thirty days, right.
I thought it all made sense.
Yeah, I think that makes.
Alright, just wanted to clarify.
Told that we couldn't. Do that, you know, who is, you can't say he was.
Who's in the house.
Yeah.
They're gonna do whatever they want to do.
Yes.
And we're not gonna be able to. We we can try to regulate it, but we can enforce it.
Yeah.
We're trying to just trap things in here.
Well, I just, I think these are.
So maybe that's. We'd rather not.
So maybe that's, we'd rather not, but. It's gotta suffice you can't. But we can enforce it anyway, so.
I don't know what people thoughts and I don't, I don't really wanna. Write a draft something else. Based on this or just either it, it's hard to go through this and understand.
So it, right. So we've got a couple of options here. If you want, I can take a shot at drafting it up as though it is a text amendment. Take out Jeff Davis's commentary so you can see what it looks like. Um, and then. At that point, did you want to schedule some sort of meeting with the council or do you just want to proceed moving? Okay. Okay, so I can do that.
Let's see.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing that I saw that. Part about this was the. I mean, the council, they were, they were having an ordinance.
So.
Is a town, it says a town.
Right, so that would come out.
No, I, I think we can leave that in and just say. An SDR permit must be obtained. From the town, but it would be saved maybe through zoning. Is it like a zoning? Or a building firm.
Yeah.
And just don't say who.
No, it would be, yeah, it would be a zoning permit.
Well, no, I mean.
But no, I'm just thinking what the language would be. I mean, that's the mechanism.
Just say shall be obtained. From the town.
But, but then who is that? I mean, who, someone's gonna come to the front counter and say, who is the town and how do I get this permit? I mean, I think we need to be very specific about it. So it, it's probably the only thing under our control would be. That's right, it's owning permit.
Okay.
Um, that would be more site plan approval, but if you um. You know, if you were. Changing out a business that didn't need. It didn't need site plan approval. Um, you would want to get a zoning permit from the zoning officials to ensure that you are within the zoning.
That might be the easy way to do it.
Yeah, yeah. Let me give some thought to that, okay? But, but it won't be something that is coming from the code of ordinance.
No, no.
At least not at this point.
No, eventually. But we just said, you know. Obtain a zoning permit for you for a short term rental, use of a short term.
Yeah, but uh, let me just.
We have all the.
Yeah.
Yeah, something simple.
Yep.
And then we wouldn't have to worry about it.
I just had one question um, on the bed breakfast. When I guess you're talking about parking, it was required for uh, say four occupants, you know, so. How many parking spaces is that?
When, where are you, sorry?
I'm sorry. It's a five point one day, seven. Um, point C bed breakfast.
Yep.
And it's under eight parking.
All required parking must be common. Okay, so.
For back to the zoning rights. And I think the maximum was four occupants.
Right, including the owners.
Oh, including the owners.
Right. All right, so the parking requirements for sixteen for bed and breakfast. All right, so. The minimum parking is one space for every guest or patient room or suite plus ten percent for staff.
Really looking at, you would be able to leave. The uh, bed and breakfast. Section as.
As it's, that's correct.
Which I think makes sense. Cause quite, they are different.
They are most have a small parking lot um, associated with it because in different people in the different rooms, different cars.
Now, yeah, for short term rentals, we reference. A couple of areas and simply dwelling, but dwelling units. When you do that, it also talks about. How you interpret a family. And there, in those two sections, well, I don't, they don't affect what the words in this go into, but they will affect. But really a short term rental. Cause you can only do it to a family or if they're individual, they're only for.
So.
A maximum of four individuals.
I thi- I think you're pulling in to the conversation, the, the court case that's here, no?
No, I just on my own, I was looking at. What's the definition of a dwelling unit?
Right.
Because I thought it got. Stopping here.
Yep, yep.
Would just. And it's very clear to me what a going unit. Or maybe it had to do with some of the. But I mean, it's a clear definition. And in there, it talks about a family and then you have to go.
And look.
What the definition of that is. And it's very clear. What that is too, but it would limit. Housing a, a short term rental. First, if they were not in a family, you could only have a maximum of four people.
And their minor children.
So what?
Yes, or unrelated. And then, and their minor children.
Well, whatever it is.
Yep.
Not saying it should change, you're saying that it's pretty. Pretty well limits what a short term rental can use.
Right, who could, right? Right.
So you can't use it at the big party. By the back, by the, by using those.
By using those definitions, that's right.
It's good when people get something new, cause it's pretty, this will be very restricted.
With the existing wording that's there, has the, has on lawyer looked at?
No, not at all. No. Nope. It, but we will, I mean, no, I don't know. What, what I plan to do is to try to, I, I will put this into. Um, um, regulation uh, form for you guys. Okay, you'll take a look at it. Once you're like, yeah, that's pretty much it. I will send it over to the town attorney for review.
Yeah, cause he has.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and i- if we can remember to specifically have them, I'm sure he knows about that.
Yes.
Piece of paper.
Yes.
And just because there's words in there that say because the regulation was vague. And I don't want ours to be vague.
Right.
Yeah. Cause in that Connecticut, um.
Right, but yeah, the, the short term rental court case.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This would be. What we have here.
It, no, it totally would. It would, it would.
Yeah, it seems like we've made it so concise. That it's, that it makes it, you know, even like our definition changing that.
Yeah, cause if, if I, as Steve Rentals come along and I want to buy a gravel street. You know, I don't, I wouldn't want. It to come fall through a loophole that says, oh yeah, you can do that because X, Y, Z.
No, no, I mean, I, I mean, I think this court case reflected the fact that. Short term rentals were not in this town's or this zoning district's regulations. So someone started the operation and the court decided that, and then, and then subsequently the, the zoning district. They did regulations, they adopted regulations. Um, and the courts after a cease and desist was issued. Um, decided that they, they started their operation prior to the regulations, thus they are grandfathered in.
And that would go with our town, that would go with the property.
Yeah, but yes, it would, no, it would not be with the owners, it goes with the property.
That's why you need the ordinance.
Right, that, that's exactly right. That's why. That's right.
Right.
Yep.
And so the only issue that we have spoke of the word dwelling with our attorney in the past. And we didn't agree um, fully together what his definition of dwelling was. So that to me, I think is the key underlying panic of, of our issue here is. Um, do we agree as a group on what dwelling means? He seemed to have a different definition.
An interpretation of it. And I think if you look at this court case, the court had that same um, interpretation.
Right.
That if you own a piece of property, you can do three things with it. You can live in it, you can sell it, you can rent it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what we've done now, or maybe the state is, is define what short term rental is.
Well, well, we will be with our, this regulation. Other, other towns have, have different regulations.
No, but I meant the thirty days versus.
Right.
And nobody's ever really done that. Or they have.
Well, yeah, I mean, towns who have done short term rentals have defined it in different ways. Some have defined it as two weeks of being short term.
Well, they should pick a time.
Absolutely.
But also, you know, having it, the legal residents. And to be a legal resident, you have to be there six months of grace. So. Almost by definition, we're limiting the amount that can be rented for less than six months, or six months. In thirty.
Exactly, you don't have to. What?
No, you're running.
So you have a short term rental. Weekend's at a time, but you rent your own house out.
Well, let's, let's just say, let's make it for one resident on a piece of property.
One resident, when you can have a short term rental.
And that's, many people have two houses on a property.
I do. I'm just saying. I'm just saying.
Houses up for me, they go actually in an accessory. Parents, okay. But you could use that and I think this one I knew on.
Yeah.
Yeah, say put in an accessory building.
Okay.
I think what Steve, that's not gonna be a hundred percent.
That's, that's, I would say the non-typical situation. I would say that, like, you know, the standard houses along, you know. Uh, like gravel street or something like that, or s- or single work buildings on a piece of property.
Of the basement.
An ADU.
Yeah.
Right. It should, we, we've defined even.
Yep.
Much more closer, right?
Yep. That's what you mean. That's.
Well.
Convertible garage.
Yeah. But they can also rent their house. Their pri- their primary residence.
For six months or thirty, thirty five days or more than thirty days. And that, within six months, within six months.
So it's not.
I think that's how I started my conversation.
What is going to um. I will know which is this grandfathering thing, there is no, we know. Without people registering in some way.
You don't.
So maybe just what, if it was an issue, we would have to.
So, I mean typically. To the zoning official, that's correct. Yeah, that they are a pre-existing non-conforming use, that they have been renting out a short term rental before the effective date of these regulations.
And it would just be uh, what would you trigger for that?
Someone, someone complaining um, of property owner. Wanting assurance that the zoning official feels that he is non-conforming, a pre-existing non-conforming. Um, yeah.
And there are other. There are services and actually. Informational people.
Yeah, I just wonder what's that, finally, we're, we're not gonna, I don't. See the zoning official having time to.
No, no, he would not, but he would respond to, he would respond to the complaint or could respond to someone saying, do you consider me a pre-existing non-conforming use? So he'd render an opinion.
Well, I mean, especially if this is going to transfer with the property as a.
Absolutely.
Deed it right, but as a, as a right. If you're going to transfer it ever that way or hope for yourself, as you'd want to establish that. Use. For your. Do that, but I think that it would be to the disadvantage of somebody who's running these things not to. Trying to run on the radar. Well, I think that we've got this wrapped up pretty tight, as tight as we can do it without more. Right. And so the processes, we sit down with the council, I just wanted to confirm that. That because there's some nuances here from what we've done as zoning versus what we, we have expectations of them as an ordinance, right? So. Part of that. I'll just pick one point is that, you know, we believe what is presently being operated is does not fit the zoning regulations within. Town of Brock, right? Don't we need to share those nuances with the town council? I think as quickly as possible in order that they also embrace our direction.
Well, once. Once we reach a decision.
Yeah. But we'd say the time would be after. Something that's clean.
We have to work something.
That's right.
I would think as far as getting it officially. Of change or close to it.
Like maybe even like after the attorney looks at. See.
Cause really the county town council just began to enforce them.
Right. And that was my point. So my point is, we need the attorney to really take um, a stance on what we've designed so far. Prior to the ordinance.
Well, don't they do that all the time?
For, for any text amendment, yeah.
Yeah. I'm just.
We have a game plan, yes.
We estimate like a time frame for this.
So, I mean, I can put it in, in application form, you know, by the next meeting. And I, well, that's can take, but well, it's taking out Jeff's comments and, yeah. Don't think it'll, yeah, cleaning it up.
And so, such a short.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. Um. Either for the next meeting or the one after that, I'm just thinking, we have a bunch of public hearings. Um, and at the same time, we put it on an agenda, I can forward it over to the town attorney's office. Do it at the same time, yeah.
Comments back, if you like, well, whatever.
Yep. Well, I mean, summer starts in June, that's next month. Yeah.
Okay. It's been a lot of work, but I'm, I think that we're. Made a lot ahead.
Although we're all done with all business, no business. The hunting commission reports. Import of. There. An unusual happened last week for our regional planning commission.
Did you have a quorum?
No. It was more soon.
That's right, the Zoom invitation was wrong.
The guy that sets it up.
Yeah.
Used the wrong password. Locked up.
Yep, yes.
He sent an email out. Trying to tell everybody I got locked up. And I just by chance, I don't have announcements on my emails, I just looked at it, I says. After ten minutes, I said, something's wrong here, couldn't help, but if you never logged on. And so he had. Sets something out, so you could log on to using this, but only three of their people. And so he had no. Well, we've never had that problem here, oh.
No.
That's the first time I've ever seen it. Well, it's always worked. And uh, I received some correspondence from the. Larry Dunn on his conservation commission requesting that he meet with us. In preparation. E O C D rewrite. Nice, like we're probably trying to do the setup on special meeting or add it to a small meeting that we have in some time, sometimes. So, so we have their concerns before we take any mention. And I did attend the uh. Open house thing on. On the resiliency and sustainability plan from. From this stick line with that out.
Which we will probably be getting in future for the ones that was, that one's a.
Sort of a summary.
That was a lead up to a report that they're working on.
Yeah, so it's sort of a summary of product status. Nothing unusual came. What was interesting at Pearl Street. It was underwater, back at the old place.
Mm-hmm.
There was a Cove Street.
Right.
Which is now the parking lot to the, to the church mostly.
No, I am surprised, actually, I bought that book when, when we were walking upon the bridge. It finally came out and it had that same. On Pearl Street, and if you really looked at it, it almost looked as maybe they can build in part of Main Street. First, and they had that pond, and it was there, may have been part of the river, it always. But it was so interesting. Seeing that, you know. Did we get, did the thunder go slow in the D O C?
It did, so last night, yeah.
So now we can start working on a plan of action.
Well, we don't get the money until July one, but yes, we can start working on a plan of action.
No, just to figure out how we wanna conduct.
Yes.
Hmm, not actually doing any.
Right.
Physical rewrite.
Right.
But I think it's critical that we have a good. First.
Agreed.
That's something. Helpless.
Yeah.
Or maybe you wanna do a lot of homework, do part of that.
Mm-hmm.
First.
Or, or outreach, yeah, we definitely will have a plan of action before we have a consultant on board.
I think we ought to think about, you know, as a commission, you should think about. What might, um, I would say. So, even though, unless, sure, you want to go up the wrong, the wrong directions.
Maybe we should just have, you know, brain, have a, some, add it as an agenda item at some point in the term.
Well, I think brainstorm.
Mm-hmm.
We've gotta do some thinking.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, internally, we've been discussing it and, and, you know, thinking about the approach and, you know, do we, do we start, you know. Doing public outreach before the commission starts setting the goals, you know, do you wanna, doing that or rather than, I, I don't know, I mean. I don't know, and do we have steering committee, or is it the, the commission and acting as the steering committee and?
Um, I think the use of a steering committee gets you in trouble.
Um. Um, I, I haven't found it very worthwhile.
No, but it can mislead it, and I, that's why I think we should understand how.
Exactly.
Concerns are, like, do we address, first of all, maybe have a feeling, what's happened in the last ten or twenty years? Where do we wanna go? Where do we think we should end up?
Mm-hmm.
Or what are basic goals?
Mm-hmm, and, and I, I think this time around, we really wanna do.
On my level.
A really concerted effort to, to get out to public groups rather than assuming they are gonna come to us.
Yep.
Um, so I, I really think we wanna do that as part of this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We at the Baptist Church.
Well, right, or, or, you know, who knows, down in, at the aquatic branch or wherever, yeah, yeah. To go where they are as opposed to assuming they're gonna come to a meeting here. Right. Right.
Well, we did have some public hearings, meetings, get togethers in the, in the town council chamber, it's pretty small.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
It'd be better to have a bigger, bigger room, like the senior center business.
Yep, and, and to go to discreet neighborhoods, I think, yeah, yeah.
But it's just, not just neighborhoods, we gotta have a field where the town should go.
Mm-hmm.
As a town.
Right. Right.
I love them.
I mean, each node, I can see.
Well, I think just one of the things is.
Renters versus homeowners and you.
Yeah.
They all have sort of different ideas of where the town should go. Yeah.
I think the thing that, like, I was watching the R T M meeting last night and the importance of it. I think it's got to, if we can get that out. You know, it's that. That it is an important document and that. Should be selling it that way, cause I think a lot of people don't know what it is.
They absolutely don't know what it is in the town council.
No, it's every member.
Clearing one of them.
With you, with the reviews and you're explaining it to people who should have known, you know, or I mean, you know.
Well, it was, it's hard to read and understand, I almost have to translate. What the real goals are and ages of.
Well, I think if we can do it in a way that we saw for like heartthrew. Wasn't.
Right, right, in a.
I think just like.
Smaller documents.
Yeah.
Big ideas, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Get rid of all the.
Basic laws.
That we don't really, I mean, we can add fluff in a fluff book, but in this one, we should have. Have. I mean, you know, that could be like, you know, you said.
You have a high book, and then you flip it over the other way.
I only think of the, for, um. Construction code, which is several people have involved, and it were all taken from two or three different construction code standards. In the beginning of the book, there's a thing that says how to use this book. Because you, otherwise you can't figure it out. In fact, sometimes you start by looking in the back and you flip to the back of the book and that's where you actually start and then you go back and forth. You need instructions, how do we use this thing?
So we have in the zoning regs.
And they don't.
Right up front, how do you use this document?
And I don't. I was going through that, I'm thinking, I'm not quite sure, I didn't even film that all, maybe, what was the intent? Needs to be there. No, 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 you're right, but zoning regs, no, you're absolutely.
But you're right, I mean, it makes for a big document that's confusing. How do you use this document?
I'll use it. Like, right, zoning regs, right, I'm confused. Since I can't use it, then, right now, we're going through that, the town, uh, property reuse. Thing I'm still getting on. And, uh, one of the things is, a, a highlight is, does it refer back to, does the use of the property go back to our plan of conservation? If the answer is, who knows? Yeah. That's what I found with Harp and Towers, there's no connection between them at all, right?
Well.
I'm just saying, very little, you think there's.
Did you read my, uh?
No, and be honest, like. So, I find stronger frameworks and other documents, that's my only point.
Yeah.
Probably technical statement.
Actually talk about it rather than going down this road. Okay, no, 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 I don't, we're just sort of starting. You know, it's not on the agenda, yeah. Yep.
We're just going on.
Yeah, I, I know.
You're right, this is not a report of coming out.
Right.
Excellent.
All right. Report a commission, is anyone on the commission?
I, I've got something, and if I remember that, we go back to my lighting, which you know is my favorite, but especially since it's a treasure of mine from our, our Musco drawings that we just saw. About the angle of light coming down in seventy. And the idea is that, oh yes, if it's at an angle, then sharp cut off, we don't see it, and that, that was what we learned. Our specifications, our talent things just had full cutoffs, which is not nearly as good, and I wish it would better, but we're living with it, cause that's what there's, that's what we've got now. But downtown Mystic, I just go through. And the exceptions are becoming overwhelming. So that I just happened to notice that there's a, the Zen is now lighting its, um, its parking lot. It's still working on things out there, and it's got a big floodlight sitting up on top, and it's just a floodlight that's not filtered in any way, it's just a big floodlight. Mystic parking, our new parking lot that I wish wasn't called Mystic. That's behind banking room, whatever it's called.
Yeah.
That used to be part of the. They just got floodlights. What floodlight wall packs attached to the, uh, old house.
Okay.
And one that pains me probably the most is the lights in front of SIFT. Are pretty much define the thing that we didn't want, they're kind of all around their outside patio. And they're on eye level, they make things harder to see for everybody, including the people who are sitting there, it's just that it calls attention to their bill. So if they come back and say, no, they're just decorative, then it's a fine, put in two watt bulbs in there, because they're not decorative, they're providing light. And they're spare light. So clearly, I'm getting, getting away from watching out for these things. I do have a question about the, um, SIFT, they're upstairs, whatever they call it, that separate business up there. That's, that's what makes one of those things where, okay, I've just built a patio, it's just a patio, oh, I just built three walls around the patio, now it's just patio with three walls. I just put a canopy on top of the patio. It's like it's a building up there.
No, no, and they, they did, they did get administrative approval for that as well as historic district. They're not increasing the seats.
No.
They're not, uh, right, I mean, there's no intensification other than they have a cover over it and walls, yeah, I know.
In fact, they reduced the seat inside, so I just wanna make sure that was figured out.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right.
Yep.
Cause it definitely is becoming extra storied.
Right.
There, and very beautiful job, but they're.
Yep.
It's not quite the patio.
Nope, it is no longer a patio, still the same number of seats.
Okay, all right.
Expansion. It's something.
Oh, yeah, I did have one question about the Zeds. What, what is going on, are they still?
They're still under construction.
Yeah.
Um.
Is there something that's holding them up or?
I, I, that, you know, probably the same as everybody else, um, labor, construction costs, materials, supply, I, yeah. Um, I think they're getting close to asking for a C O, um, but we have not had a request yet.
And ten years running, uh, Central Hall.
Oh, same, they're, I understand they are really working on the residences, there are three or four now that are fitted out. Um, but. But not all of the residential units are ready.
Well, they were telling Stan one, that's what they're gonna do.
Mm-hmm. Nice to have money.
No, they wanted, they didn't have a bunch.
Is that the reason?
No, that's.
I don't know.
No. The rents downstairs.
No.
I think that's a judgment, I'm not sure that's true. But.
Yeah, so funny, that's our, that's our issue.
Yeah, exactly, not our issue.
Right.
All right. We move on, and application.
Actually, did you wanna just mention the, the application that's going to hearing next?
Minor update on the application, the zoning application that's going to hearing next meeting, that's the, um. Storage and parking minor edits, so we did pull the two, um. Parking calculations for indoor and outdoor recreation because we tried to ground truth them and we were working with. Plans and it didn't quite work out, so we're gonna go back to the drawing board on those, but everything else is going forward.
And I ask for a report. Put them out there as some. And we have a, a betteration part of the newsletter, which says for assignment, short term. It's appropriate for tonight. And would you have anything else? Do. Entertain a motion for adjournment?
Low mood.
We have a second.
Second, second. Everybody's.
Right, very good. Great, thank you. Good night.